I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, will you please call the roll?
Barbara Holmes, President. Bob Nelson?
Here.
Marty Meyer?
Here.
Arlene King?
Here.
Sam Howard?
Here.
Ron Richards?
Here.
Carol Ann Swartzenbach?
Here.
Skylar Wessel?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Call for a motion to adopt the agenda again, reminding council that if there is any thing that you'll be voting on tonight and there is a conflict of interest, I would like you to please let the rest of the council know.
Motion to approve the agenda?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have in your packages the minutes from the January 16th council meeting? Just had a chance to review those. I'd accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the 16th meeting. Are there any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And again, just a reminder to the council, we do have someone on the cell phone tonight, so he would speak up. So Skylar can hear you all the way out in California. Okay, we move on to claims. Bills in between for $242,876.72. Accept the motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between. Two hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six, seventy-two.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. We do have a change to the current claims. I asked Misty if you could go ahead and brief the council on those changes. I think it was on page four.
You'll notice a very small change to the claims. For rapid delivery, it's about halfway down the page, page four, there is addition of $2.51 per fuel charge, bringing that total from $16.75 to $19.06. And your total current claims amount is $168,087.59.
And accept a motion to approve the current claims.
I've accepted a motion to approve the current claims with the recommendation to table an item on page six. It's the first item that leads online. I'll talk a little bit about that during my public safety meeting. The public safety meeting, with my understanding, was an item that was still in discussion. It wasn't looking to be approved for purchase of. That's the reason I'd like to table that until the next public safety meeting. If I've done my math correctly, that would mean the amount will change from $168,085.82 to $166,599.59.
I agree.
I got it right?
Yep.
Second? It changed to $166,599.59, my table on item.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve the current claims with the change on page four. And also to table the item on page six for a new total of $167,509.59.
$166,509?
Yes, fifty-one.
$166, okay.
And then the rest of the motion, please, the council tabled the claims for $48,599.
Ready?
I'll second with Carol Ann.
Yes. Are there any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we do have Wells Fargo credit card claims of $2,991.98. Accept a motion to approve those credit card claims at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the credit card claim.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those credit card claims. Is there any comments, questions, or discussion?
I have a comment. On page two, the credit card payment to Menards for the twelve-foot collect Christmas tree, $368.62, including sales tax, $26.91. The tree was purchased online in another state, purchased in Minnesota. And our department head was not able to get them to remove the sales tax. And I came with their house receivable department to get that removed. So although it's on here now as a claim, in this batch, we'll hopefully see a refund on our credit cards for the sales tax.
Okay, thank you, Misty. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And before we move on, I just want to say thanks to the council members that come and look over these current claims. I know today, Georgia, Bob, and Carol Ann were there. And just to make sure the public is aware that there's a lot of questions that go in and to come up and question each one of these is a very, very important functioning job. I appreciate you doing that. I do believe that we're establishing a good record of financial responsibility and a culture that really identifies how we can best spend the public's money. So thank you very much. And to the rest of the council, thank you for also looking at that and getting that homework done ahead of time. At this time, we'll have communications from the public. And we do have on the agenda according to the report from the Hot Springs Chamber. Olivia, I'm going to have to interrupt you at 7:10 because we have a hearing. And it's only 7:08 right now. I will watch.
I can say what I have to say in here in less than two minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm here on behalf of Chaco to address support for the residential tax rebate. I was present at all of one of the 36 listening groups that we had as part of the community engagement process. And in every one of those groups, we need to address new residential improvements to existing residential and a pathway to address the dilapidated structures was mentioned and discussed at length. So the community supports this proposal.
And this will be something we'll be considering on our next agenda. We discussed it at Admin and Finance today. And Andrea, thank you for bringing that word from the public. Again, that's part of our plan to try to stimulate much-needed workforce housing here at Hot Springs. It has created a lot of interest and hopefully we'll see some positive results in the future. Thank you, Andrea. I do have 7:10. And I would go ahead at this time and open the public hearing. We have changing seasons for application for an on-off sale malt beverage in South Dakota farm wine license to be used at 323 South Chicago Street. Michelle is here. You do have the application in the package, council. Michelle, can you give us a background?
Maybe I just would like to be able to, you know, guys can buy roses that we buy, also buy bottled wine. And it'd be nice to participate in my wine. And if we start doing some design classes, that we could offer derbies and wine for that. We ran a PJ's Conical for the last eleven years, it was heated on off sale. And so we know about, you know, our, we should be very safe in these places.
Well, we certainly want to welcome you and your business here to Hot Springs. Appreciate you being here and your vision. Are there any other comments from the public? This is a public hearing. Any questions from the council?
I stopped in to see, he's got a break-in shot for that, because I don't, that makes me want to order wine with you because that'd bring everybody down soon.
Changing seasons is a Chamber member. They join, they brought some very valuable to the community. And I think then being able to offer a wide range of service with gift baskets, which are popular and you can't get them very easily.
Okay, thank you very much, Olivia. Any other comments?
Good idea.
Thank you, Wally. Go ahead then at this time and close the hearing at 7:12. I guess I would accept a motion at this time to accept that application for an on-off sale malt beverage in South Dakota farm wine license for changing seasons for.
I'll make a motion to accept the hot beverage license for changing seasons for.
Your second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this on-off sale malt beverage license and South Dakota farm wine license. Are there any discussion, comments from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And again, congratulations and thank you for opening the business here in Hot Springs. We wish you well. Getting back to communications from the public. And Olivia, welcome.
My accordia, you members of the city councils, the officials, members of the audience, thank you for allowing me to come and give a big presentation on what's going on with the Hot Springs Chamber. I'm the new director, for those who may not know the name, and I'm very excited to be in the Chamber and serving our community. We ask for all to see so many new businesses opening up in Hot Springs. And we're working very hard to grow our membership and offer membership to all of our new business as well as some older members that have not, excuse me, businesses that have not been approached. Our mission is to offer everybody Chamber membership and get them on board with us. We'd love to grow the economy and basically be a good resource for the whole community. To this end, we institute member Mondays. In fairness, it doesn't always happen on a Monday. But the idea is once a week to make sure to set time assigned to go out and visit with members, potential members, and members of the community to give the Chamber more visibility in the community. We're also currently looking with the local county herald and local radio station KZIMX to try and offer some form of print or radio advertising as a member benefit. We also put out a number of publications, the city map, the blue map you see around town, the Hot Springs Welfare Magazine, Premier Go to publication that we use, the Motel Directory, which is found with hotel rooms, and some directory, which is a piece that we produce to assist with visitors, the frontline staff. We're looking to add another publication this year called The Dining Guide. It will be a greenhouse-produced publication that will appear in hotels in a small stand to assist our guests in finding a place to meet. It's one of the leading questions we're trying to hit. It makes it easier for them. It will be a member piece, but non-members are welcome to attend, preferably become members. But you can also be in the guide, you'll get a small fee. We're also going to be doing a job here in March to help local businesses hire their summer staff and also to assist local businesses fill in their full-time positions. And we will be offering customer service training again this year. Date hasn't been finalized, but we'd like to split it into two pieces. One is the pure customer service training where we're attempting to get our service game up to the hot springs. And that's basically where your guests and the visitors come, let them leave, see them really special. That is very important. But also, we'd like to do some familiarization training where we will have folks learn a little bit about what we have to offer by way of attractions, dining, various different activities going on. And if we can teach our frontline staffs that it's disappointing when somebody comes in and says, "Hey, what's to do in Hot Springs?" "Ugh, nothing." You have to retire that attitude. So we will do whatever we can to help get the mindset, everybody should be on board with how great our community is. We also would like folks to know that the Chamber of Commerce is a resource for the whole community. And anyone is welcome to call us for assistance, be it something small, if looking at the phone number, finding if there's a thing in Hot Springs. We work for you and we're here to help. Quick committee reports, our ambassadors continue to meet on the second Friday of the month. Anybody can be an ambassador and we would encourage folks to look out for when things are happening. The more people that welcome the business to town, the better we look. So if anyone is interested in being an ambassador, we'd love to hear from you. It's not only new business, we recognize longevity in business. And once again, I offer, if you know of a business that hasn't been recognized, I apologize, it's oversight on our part, but please let us know so we can rectify that. Agriculture, we're currently working on how to better serve our ag community. We'll continue to support Conservation Day at Woodney Preserve and we'll still offer the Ag Scholarship and sponsor two meals at the county fair. But ag is the hidden industry in Florida County and South Dakota, and we need to do more. To this end, I'm reaching out to ag producers. We welcome suggestions and we'd like to serve our ag community. Tourism is part of it, so I'll go fast. We placed our major ads in the Southern Hills Vacation Guide, the South Dakota Vacation Guide. And we're participating in a number of collabs with Black Hills and Badlands Tourism Association. We ordered the Soaking Records and Travel Bags last year, so we don't need to do that again. We're putting out 20,000 city maps in full color. And the Black Hills map and the South Dakota Highway map are also distributed through the Chamber. Our members get a benefit of being in the Southern Hills Vacation Guide and the Hot Springs Welfare Magazine. The Hot Springs Welfare Magazine is also produced by the Chamber. And this year, we'll be producing it with the Florida County Herald. They're able to give us a downloadable and printable PDF, which is very important for us because it costs a lot to mail magazines. And some folks are quite fine with getting a PDF version. And we still all mail magazines, but we do also then take the leads that we've gathered over the years. We're sitting in the, probably 50,000 leads that have already received a magazine, but now in a position to remarket to those people, reminding them again that this is the best place to visit and they should put that on the list. We're also working with the board to participate in the matching funds, follow up through South Dakota Tourism. The state matches the 40,000 that we've put up, giving us 80,000 in total to promote Hot Springs. We also maintain five billboards, one's north of Maverick, one's south of Maverick, Mill Creek Junction, one just outside Edmond, and one right by the Bar Junction. We are investigating the possibility of trying to create some form of signage up by the I-90. Those are premium priced. We're working on it because we have established that there is a need for some sort of warming Hot Springs that way. So we're working on that. We're also participating in the Black Hills and Badlands sponsored travel shows. That's where information on Hot Springs is handed out at the shows. We can attend them, but obviously, you know, time and money wise, it's not a smart thing. They do that for us. And this year, our information will be given out in St. Paul, Chicago, Duluth, Omaha, Madison, Wisconsin, Colorado Springs, Fargo, Winnipeg, and Minneapolis. And then also, we have been asked to look into doing some form of Sturgis event to try and bring some of the traffic down to our town. So we are currently working on a loosey-tight little event called Bikers, Vicin, and Gru. We're working, we're working with local businesses, getting some music going. This will be a one-day event and we're starting now because we like to get on people's radar that by the time the area of Sturgis rolls around, we're on people's radar. And hopefully, we can start small and grow this event, that we can also welcome some of the Sturgis traffic to town. We're finalizing our digital advertising that we're going to be doing for the season. And we're going to run that off to areas in South Dakota Tourism also focused, so that way we up our presence and our profile in those areas. We're looking to do a bit more advertising in the fall season to bring people in off-season. I was fortunate to attend the government's conference in tourism. I learned a lot and hopefully it will be brought to that to our members. And the Deep Oceans Center will open on May 1st to September 31st. But then we stay open for a song if the weather holds. New turn of business promotions. Very thrilled to announce that the Ho 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 campaign that we did with the star this year was very successful. 686 cards were turned in, each representing $100. That meant that $68,600 stayed right here. We also sold 13,000 new Chamber bucks during the Christmas season. Again, that money all stayed here, so that's a good start. We continue to support local business and the Shop Local campaign. We have to keep driving the message forward, please shop in Hot Springs. Don't take your business to somebody else's town, give it to your town. And to this end, we have an ad running weekly in the form of the County Herald in the same spot. And that's partly to keep the Chamber presence in the community. We're also going to encourage local shopping around things like Valentine's Day, Mother's Day, Father's Day, and of course, a big push towards Small Business Saturday in November. We can use that little space to welcome new members, do PSAs, keep people appraised on what's happening in the Chamber. New event coming up called the Hot Springs Treasure Hunts happening, starts on the 13th of March. It's a way of getting folks into the local businesses. I'm taking a long time, so I'm gonna run for afternoon. But feel free to stop by and look at the various newspapers. We'll be advertising that event, it'll be a lot of fun. Petron Wilson donated a holly balloon ride as the prize, the first prize out of the tour. On the subject of balloons, plans are underway for the third annual Florida Holly Balloon Festival. I can now call us the award-winning because we won an award very proud. Our 2017 sponsors will sign on again, so thank you very much today. And we'll keep the art element. One thing we are focusing on is that we do have to have more things to bring the crowd, the 800 to 1,000 people that be here, we need to bring more of them into town and get them spending the month. One of the ideas is possibly to have tether balloon rides somewhere like at the Mammoth Site, right by the highway. Have something else in Centennial, have something else at Evans Blanche, Butler Park. And just keep the traffic moving around, moving around, and lure as many people to town. Once they're here, they love us. The Chamber Dinner is on March 10th. We made a few changes to the awards. The businesses are nominating and we're having our taste of Hot Springs. Please call the Chamber for details, everybody's welcome. Supreme Court Show as usual, April 14th. Wine walking path goes down Memorial Day weekend. Fourth of July, we're looking to add something to the afternoon. We've identified a need where by 2 o'clock and Duck Race is over, since the demolition derby isn't happening, things seem to tank around there and we lose the crowd. We don't want people leaving Hot Springs. To this end, we're working with folks to see if we can get the Patriot Games going up at Butler Park. Family-friendly, fun, get some barbecue competition, throw a few bands there so people can get some music. And what's beautiful about Butler Park, conveniently located, you don't have to move, you can see the fireworks. So we're working on that to try and make our Fourth of July even better. And we've got a pretty good one, we've got to plug that off. We mentioned the Sturgis event. We wanted to motion three or three on Halloween. As always, supporter of the business and Small Business Saturday, and the cookie crews at school are here. So thank you very much for allowing me to do this report. If anyone does have questions, comments, concerns, compliments, or things, please feel free to come to the Chamber anytime my staff and I are happy to help you and we work for you. So I'm 20, city council, thank you.
Love you.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, it's the second Friday at 1:00 P.M. The best way is to email me and we'll put you on the list so you know where we stopped, so that you can stay there instead of all of us meet here and then drive through town. I'm sorry, sir.
We have one more comment and I was going to thank you for doing a support. I think that's something you would need to realize.
It's time.
Okay.
And to that end, if anyone has info or input, we want to hear it all. I've talked to Peggy Sanders, I've talked to Kristi Phillips, various people. We've got to do something good. And I'm not an ag person, so you guys have to help.
Olivia, yes, thank you very much. You have a very, very concise and thorough roundup of Chamber events. Kind of brought back a few memories.
Yeah. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
It's very important that we have a very vibrant and active Chamber because that helps us generate tax dollars that help support the functions that the city is supposed to provide for its residents. So we work together and we appreciate that. Kim, I know you take a note, we want to get involved in that customer service training for folks at the plunge. I think we're talking about that. And the signage issue, I would like to engage South Dakota DOT again. There is no sign off of the interstate, an official road sign, it gets to Hot Springs. And a very small sign on the bypass.
At Manacari Applewood here 20 years, I know where I'm going. And coming back from the tourism conference, I'm nearly miss my own journal because there's nothing directing you to the 79, saying Hot Springs is the... People get lost, we're losing business because of that. Any support we can offer to, 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 to get us out?
The excuse that was given in the past was that it didn't, the highway did not connect directly to Hot Springs because Highway 79 didn't come into the city. But we've got a solution to that. If we annex the airport as part of the city, then 79 will cut Hot Springs. And we may, we will demand that we have a sign to do that. But I know we worked that hard in the past and we know that's a problem and I appreciate it. Wally?
Yes, we have something.
Yes.
We need to push our comment, sign and grab, make a cracker over here. And then why we don't have, because it was pushed by the two-city keystone, just put the 16, nothing's up.
We'll, and so we'll address that. But again, I appreciate all the things that the Chamber's doing. And thank you very much for the very thorough report. I think it helps all of us to understand all the, all the work that does go on. Are there any other communications from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to the presentation. We have our Airport Engineering Group, SEH, here tonight with us. And we're going to take an overview of our airport master plan, so Alex.
Very good, thank you, man. My name is Alex Boyce, I'm the Regional Sales Manager for Short Elliott Hendrickson. With me is Casey Newton, this is the woman in charge at your airport. She knows what's going on a lot better than I do. What I'm, what I'm here to do is to met with staff today, sat down, talked about some communication needs. What I'm here to do is to met with staff today, sat down, talk about some communication needs, some things that we're doing at the airport, and gave them the same summary, brief summary, of what we're doing for the master plan at the airport. On your agenda, it says a brief overview of the master plan. That said, I'm not going to say anymore, I'm gonna turn around to Casey, let her talk a little bit about what's going on at your airport. It is exciting, however, to hear it included in the Chamber news, and hear the role it is playing with the balloon event, we talked quite a bit about that today. We're here to support any economic development efforts, and really play a role as an extension to the city staff in any way we can. Thank you for your time, Casey, you're on.
All right. I'm gonna give you a brief overview, like Alec said, of the airport master plan, which was done recently. I'll talk a little bit about what the timing of it was. Just real quick, what I'm gonna try and go overview, or go over with you today. I'll give you a brief introduction to S.E.H., to who we are, who our team is. Overview of the master plan process, what the airport, the airport advisory board, city staff has been working on over the past several years with this project. And then, within that master plan, give you an overview, you know, the airport use, the activity forecast that came out of it, and what overall, the very high-level recommendations that came out of the plan. Talk a little bit about funding sources for those recommendations, you know, how do the projects get funded, both from a local standpoint, a federal standpoint, a state standpoint, all the different types of funding that are available. Talk a little bit about the capital improvement plan, that's one of the outputs of the master plan. And then, just show you a brief overview of your airport layout plan and what that is, which is another product of the master plan. Real briefly, our S.E.H. team that's serving Hot Springs. Up at the top there is Sean McMahon, he's the engineer serving the airport. Normally, he would be with me today, unfortunately, one of his parents is in the hospital, so he wasn't able to join us. So, you just get me. But Sean and I work in a team. The way we serve our airport clients is we have an engineer and a planner that work together in tandem, so I'm a senior planner with S.E.H. I've worked for S.E.H. for about 11 years. Sean's been with S.E.H. for about 10 years, a professional engineer. So we work together on most of our airport clients. Alec, as he did his introduction, is a client service manager. Sean and I work specifically in our airports group, we only work on airports. We both are pilots. I have a small recreational pilot background, Sean was an Air Force pilot, so we're in a lot of different perspectives from that area. And then, S.E.H. as a whole, we're a multi-disciplined firm. We have scientists, engineers, architects, surveyors, lots of different resources that are available to us to kind of pull in for airport projects as needed. It's a little hard to see, but you can kind of see a map of our offices, you know. To the west, we're out into Colorado and Wyoming, and on the east, over to the Indiana area. We have about 800 employees, and about, you know, 25 of us are specific to airports, but the rest of the team we're able to pull from for other resources within S.E.H. Working in energy, environmental, transportation, water, wastewater. Just a brief overview of kind of the airports that we work at throughout, you know, the Midwest, out to a little bit of the mountain area in Colorado and Wyoming. Both general aviation airports, like Hot Springs, which are the ones in blue, as well as commercial service airports, which are the ones in red. So we have a wide mix of backgrounds and clients that we serve. So kind of into the meat of what I want to go over with you today, talk a little bit about the master plan process. The master plan is kind of a much more, I don't want to call it a comprehensive plan, but it's kind of your long-term vision for the airport, to identify, you know, what is your airport today, where are we expecting it to go? What do you need to do to accommodate what your airport is today? And what do you need to do to accommodate it in 10 years and 20 years? And how are you going to fund that, and what are some of the priorities? So kind of the process that we went through started with an airport inventory in 2014 is when the project began. We did a user survey. We also did a pretty detailed activity forecast, so we looked at the existing and forecasted levels of takeoffs and landings, and base aircraft, and different activity metrics that we look at. And then, from there, we develop a list of airport development needs, not only for today, but for each kind of timeframe into the future, as that activity grows. What is the airport going to need to do to support that changing need out at the airport? There's an alternatives analysis for the recommendations that warrant looking at different alternatives, and then ultimately selecting the recommendations. The review, or the, sorry, the report includes also an environmental overview, what some of the environmental impacts may be. There are certain projects that require different levels of environmental review, so we identify kind of what are those steps before each project is implemented. And then, there's an implementation plan, which I think is really like a living document that comes out of the master plan. So it's a C.I.P., a capital improvement plan for the airport, that documents kind of what projects should happen over the next 20 years, at what point in time, why they should happen at that point in time, you know, what projects should happen concurrently with other projects or before other projects. There's a project cost estimate for each project, as well as a discussion on available funding for each project. So, for each project in there, you know, what type of federal funding is available, state funding, and then what's the anticipated local share for the city of Hot Springs. And then ultimately, one of the big products of the master plan is what's called your airport layout plan. So that's a graphic document, plan set of your airport. You know, they're typically about eight to 12 plan sheets long, that document all different aspects of your airport. It's an FAA requirement, because you receive federal funding, that you have an up-to-date airport layout plan. So this project accomplishes that. And one important piece to remember, to understand about the process, is identifying a project in your master plan in no way obligates you to do the project. It just identifies that that is something you may want to consider in the future. But one key component to remember is that if you do want to do a project, the FAA requires that it be shown on your master plan or airport layout plan. So say, you want to pursue building a city-owned hangar at the airport. If it is not shown on your plan, you can't do it. So that's why it's important to be very forward-thinking in your planning, and kind of think big picture on where you might want to go. And then these plans can obviously be updated as needed. So, just an overview of the airport. You know, you obviously have two runways out there. Your paved runway is 4,500 feet long, 100 feet wide, which is actually pretty wide for that long of runway. That's a really good asset that you guys have out here, is that additional width. This runway, you know, typically would serve a small, you know, a twin-engine plane. Some smaller jets are capable of using the airport, which is a really great asset. And then you have the turf crosswind runway, which typically would serve smaller aircraft. Airport use and role, obviously we talked about the Hairy Balloon Festival, but the airport has a lot of uses, and a very diverse mix of uses here in Hot Springs, which I think is really great. Obviously, there's a lot of recreational use at the airport. There's business use as well. I know Kim mentioned today that Dollar General has used the airport since they've come to town, so it's great to have as a business asset. Firefighting, medical, so from the public service side of things, the airport brings a great value to your community. And then more recreational things, like the skydiving, hot air balloons, gliders, other things that, you know, are bringing a lot of great asset to your community. The FAA and the state of South Dakota both have their vision of what Hot Springs' role is as an airport. The FAA considers it a local general aviation airport, which are the smaller general aviation airports. However, they do really talk about how they are the backbone of the general aviation network within the national airspace system. So it is very important to the national airspace system. Typically, these airports would be a piston, smaller corporate aircraft, maybe a twin-engine or single-engine airport, or aircraft. And then, the state of South Dakota classifies airports as well. Hot Springs is a medium general aviation airport, just what it sounds like, right kind of in the middle of the general aviation airports, typically serving a singular, multi-engine plane, so kind of in line with what the FAA classifies Hot Springs as. One thing, I think this data is from 2010, the last time that the DOT updated the economic activity, but they estimate the economic activity directly from the Hot Springs Airport to be about $208,000 in a year. So that includes the multiplier effect of everything that goes on at the airport. And then, also 15 jobs. And I know the activity level at the airport has increased, you know, there's the balloon festival, and a lot of new things happening since this data was last collected. So I would guess that once the state updates this, you would see a change in that number. Base aircraft forecast, just to kind of give you an idea of the activity trends at the airport. This data starts with 2015 data, from when we started the process, so it might be a little bit different today, but starting with 33-based aircraft going up to 48 by the end of the 20-year forecast term. I know the airport has historically had a lot of interest in hangars and hangar waiting lists, so there is definitely a demand for hangar space and interest in that. And that is something I would say statewide we're seeing with airports, some post-recession, you know, that demand for hangar space and building hangars is really starting to come back. Just a quick overview of kind of what we're going to be designing each runway to. So, your main paved runway really is designed, kind of in the critical aircraft. Our design aircraft is something similar to what's shown in the picture there, that's a King Air 90, so a turboprop twin-engine aircraft. Your runway is capable of serving some smaller jets, but this is really our focus design aircraft. And then the turf crosswind runway being designed more to that smaller, single-engine, like Cessna 172-type aircraft. So, to give you an overview, just run through them real quick at a high level of what the recommendations are in the master plan. And again, these are not by any means a requirement for the city to pursue any of these projects, it's just the recommendations that the city may consider in the future. You'll see, if you can see it on the screen, there's a blue partial parallel taxiway on the west side of the runway that has since been constructed after this year, so that's done, and that's great, that's a really important safety enhancement for your airport. And then, it's a little hard to see, but there's some colored expansion areas in the building area to accommodate an additional taxi lane, it's like a taxi wave, but a little bit smaller, and some hangar development as well, to kind of accommodate that hangar demand that we're really seeing in the forecast, and in some of the information on waiting lists of the airport. And then, the five-to-10-year timeframe, the next project that was recommended is the extension of that partial parallel taxiway across to the south end of the runway. Now, as you see your number of takeoffs and landings increase, that would be another important safety enhancement, so that taxiing aircraft can get off the runway. As your operations, as your takeoffs and landings increase, the importance of a parallel taxiway becomes even more. And then there's some lighting enhancements to the runway as well that are recommended. In the 10-to-20-year timeframe, as soon as I'll click over here, it includes reconstruction of your main runway, so replacing the pavement, it's just reaching the end of its useful life. So that reconstruction project, as well as some additional hangar area expansion. And then the hangar area expansion really is shown more in concept, but is really meant to be designed to kind of fit user needs. So say you have a business that comes in, an aircraft mechanic business, for example, and they come in and they have, say, you know, "I want to come in and build this specific hangar in this size, and I want to have this aircraft parking space for some outdoor aircraft storage." This can all be designed specific to their needs, so you don't have to show it, you don't have to build exactly as is shown on the plan here. And then, for the beyond 20 years, things that maybe weren't forecasted within the 20 years, but again, we want to leave flexibility for the city, so we do show more capacity at the airport than may be needed, but that allows flexibility as, you know, demand may change, or users come forward and want specific things, then you have options on your plan. So, some options that could be considered in the future if demand warrants. In purple there, you'll see the paving of the crosswind runway. There's potential that there could be demand for that in the future. Also, an extension of the main runway to the south, depending on the types of users that really grow at the airport, there's the potential that that project could be needed. And then there's quite a bit of additional hangar area expansion to accommodate additional hangar areas. And again, that all can be done as demand warrants, but it's just great to have it on your plan to kind of leave flexibility and options open. And then, I mentioned you have what's called the airport layout plan. So this is your official FAA record document of your airport that shows your existing facilities, as well as what your proposed facilities are. And this goes on file with the FAA. You are obligated, as an airport sponsor, to keep this document up to date. So anytime you build something at your airport, you should be going in and doing a small update to this. So for example, we did your taxiway construction project this past summer. Part of what we do with that project is we will go into a small update, the FAA has since approved this, but now we will go and update to show that that taxiway is no longer a future condition, it's an existing condition. So there are some small updates like that that would happen throughout the lifespan of the A.L.P. So there's a lot of recommendations in the master plan, and funding is always a big question, you know, how do we accomplish these needs at our airport to meet the existing demand and future demand? Fortunately for airports, there's some really great funding sources out there. You just did your taxiway projects, so you're probably a little bit familiar with this. The FAA participates with their Airport Improvement Program, or A.I.P., is a federal funding source for airports like Hot Springs, and the FAA will participate in 90% of project costs. So, if you want to, so, moving back, so for your taxiway project, the FAA participated in 90% of that project cost. The state of South Dakota participates in 5% of the project costs, and then the cost sets, the responsibility of the city of Hot Springs, is 5%. So there's some great funding sources out there. The state of South Dakota also has some funding available for some non-federally eligible projects, but for the most part, the FAA participates in the vast majority of those recommendations that I went through with you. You do receive $150,000 annually from the FAA to spend at the airport. That can be banked throughout the years to get up to, you know, a larger project value if you have a project above $150,000. There's also what's called discretionary money for high-priority projects, that the FAA will give you dollars above and beyond that $150,000. So, things like your taxiway extension project or runway extension typically would receive discretionary funding. One other important thing to understand about these funding sources in aviation is that the A.I.P. program from the FAA, the funding source comes directly from user fees and taxes from the aviation system. So, if you fly on Delta out of Rapid City, or you fly in a general aviation aircraft out of Hot Springs and buy gas and pay a fuel tax, all of those taxes and fees from aviation users go into the Airport Trust Fund at the federal level, and that is what funds the A.I.P. program. So it's not general tax dollars that fund these airport improvement projects, and then the same on the state side. So for the local share of the 5%, there's lots of different sources. There's hangar leases, land leases, fuel sales, or flowage fees that might be charged, aircraft parking fees, there's a lot of different ways for airports to earn revenue. There's also different commercial operations. There could be a mechanic out there that the city is getting some revenue from, or whether it's through a lease or a concession agreement or things like that, a rental car, an FBO, which is kind of a gas station for an airport, things like that. The capital improvement plan, I know you can't read it, but you can get the picture that there's a 20-year plan for the airport identifying the projects. It includes project costs as well as funding sources, and what the local share might be. I like to really think of this as a living document that should be updated every year. We come and meet with the city and the South Dakota DOT and the FAA as well every year to go through this document and update it on an annual basis. So this is something that the city can use to update, to reflect the changing needs of the airport. Just to touch on a few business development opportunities that the airport could consider. You know, there's recruiting other on-airport businesses. One important thing to understand about an airport is that because you receive federal money, every time you receive it, you're signing off to a certain list of grant assurances with the FAA. And one of those is that you will use your airport only for aeronautical purposes. So anything you want to do to develop your airport land has to be in aeronautical use. So whatever your business, you know, business expansion would have to be aeronautical. You can do things to increase airport revenue, whether it be leases, or making sure you're getting enough money through fuel sales. Other community events, like the balloon festival, some communities do an airshow or a fly-in pancake breakfast, things to, you know, raise awareness about your airport, medical evacuation, fire suppression, a lot of communities are able to use those as a revenue source as well, for the airport, as well as, you know, obviously it's providing an important community service, public service to the community. A few other things I just want to hit on that are included in the master plan that aren't really in the 20-year C.I.P., because they're not a project cost from, you know, the FAA or the state. But there are some other recommendations, I'm not going to go through all of these, but there's things like emergency plans, or spill control and countermeasure plan related to the fueling system, and some other kind of planning level things. Other recommendations, like pursuing an agreement with a local rental car company. You know, people fly into the airport, and sometimes that last mile is the biggest challenge. You know, you fly into the community, and then how do you get into town to visit, you know, the restaurants, or visit whatever it is that you're coming to do? So that's an important ask. So that's an important asset for airports. And, let's see, what other things are important to... Another one, just to kind of give an example of another type of thing that's a recommendation and that isn't really a project cost, but something to be aware of. EPA is moving from leaded fuel to unleaded fuel. Aviation fuel is still a leaded product. So the EPA is really pushing the aviation community to move away from that. We're expecting there to be a change in the fuel type here in the near future. So that will impact the fuel that's available at the airport and the facilities that are there. You know, they're still in the testing. Do you have to replace your tank? Or can you convert a tank when you're changing the fuel type? So just things like that to be aware of that are all kind of outlined in the master plan. Okay, I hit on most of these. Another thing, just to hit on, you know, the master plan from an FAA perspective, the FAA funded this planning study, and they have to, they require you to fit this plan within their box of eligible amount, eligible types of effort. So this is really a facility plan, an airspace plan, a forecasting discussion around things that the FAA is very concerned about at your airport. It isn't really a business plan, but this can really act as a springboard into kind of more of that business planning discussion for your airport. But unfortunately, the FAA doesn't pay for the business planning, so we kind of have to keep those separate, kind of checkbox. Yeah, right. So with that, I guess I'll leave it open to any questions that you might have about the master plan or the airport that hopefully I'll be able to answer.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Just a couple of things. We really appreciate the work going into that. I think we put more of an emphasis on the tracks and businesses into our Hot Springs Airport. In fact, we do have a meeting later on this week to perhaps look at that a little bit closer with an individual that may be interested in that. One of the other things I did not see under there, and I don't know what the official name for it is, but it's an automatic weather station that we don't really have a complete total weather station here in Hot Springs. Now, that not only benefits our pilots, it provides an additional amount of safety, because the weather in Rapid and the weather in Shadrin and the weather in Custer are completely different, all at the same time. And that's something that I think we need to kind of keep on the radar. The other benefit that that does, when you click on the NOAA A-weather site for Hot Springs, you can temperature, cloud conditions, and so forth in custom, because it's the closest full weather station. And when Mike Modrick ends his spiel on the Black Hills, you don't see Hot Springs in that initial mention. So that's something that not only will benefit us safety-wise, but also keep us in the radar, people that are interested to come down, like all the balloon riders, whatever. So that's something that we need to keep in mind. And do you have any comments on the...
(laughter)
And obviously, that's our first priority, is the hangars, because we do have a waiting list of people and...
(inaudible).
And I hope that every, again, everyone picked up the economic impact. It's something that's hidden away from the limelight of the city, but it has almost a million dollars of economic impact.
Two thousand.
And that's a state study, and it's, again, they do very, very detailed research to give those numbers. So thank you very much. And please pass our regards on Shaw and tell them a thing about the... Yes, go ahead.
I was just going to thank you for all you've done, of course, because I think I've been on here with the whole study here, but the taxiway, to get that done, and it looks great. So I think you've worked out that way. I appreciate your help.
Always nice to hear. Thank you.
One other thing that I guess I forgot to mention, I just want to make sure everyone's aware, the FAA and the South Dakota DOT were very strong partners throughout this entire process, and we had several kind of check-in review meetings with them. You know, in that slide where I had all those blue boxes, they were along with us, you know, approving at each step along the way, which I think is really important to set you guys up to have a plan that they support, you know, for things like the AWAS, the weather station, which I didn't cover today, but it is in the plan. Getting them on board ahead of time, ahead of that ask for that money, so it's really important.
The DOT has been a big advocate of the AWAS system as well. Very, very, very supportive of it. Point made. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And again, thanks again for all the help and putting the plan together, and hope we can facilitate some of those hangars a lot quicker and so forth. Thank you. We're working with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on in our agenda. We've had some here and now. Go ahead and accept the motion to accept Personnel Actions A to E.
Motion to approve A to E.
It's been moved in second. Those Personnel Actions be approved. Any questions, comments, or discussions? Hearing none. All votes in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to committee reports. Administrative and Finance, Carol Ann.
We had today, I want to talk at City Hall. A lot of the things we discussed, the mayor and Misty and Kim were present later. We talked about the surplus of city departments, buildable lots, Kim and Misty are working on this. The city donation gift policy will be finalized within the period. The community approves these changes. Residential tax agreement, Ryan Spencer, I think she spoke about that, that we approve that and we honor our agenda later. Mayor and Finance Officer Davis have reported out some things they're working on. We discussed the use of city salaries and wages to pay for employee community service. We requested research to make it city policy to not fund this. Email policy, Misty and Kim will work on the policy involving IP, if needed. The Scholarship Foundation, RFP, Misty's going to talk about that. And we discussed fees at Hornblower Bed, and that's it.
Thank you, Carol Ann. Airport Advisory Committee, Georgia.
Oh, yes. We met on the 25th. It was kind of a special meeting. It was centered around Hot Springs Fund Law Day that they're proposing to do the 2nd of June, and it was introduced by Clint Brusnick, I think is how you say it. Anyway, the event would possibly include the balloons, gliders, jumps, parachute jumps, B-52 fly-in, ping pong drop, Civil Patrol, the different activities for people from ages eight to fifteen. And then the event would be following, have the following people involved, and we gave a list of producers who do what. And then the special meeting was discussed, but no definite time for them to finalize these plans. And the next meeting will be February 23rd at 8:00 at the airport.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And, Kim, remind me, we need to make sure that the chamber's aware of that flight and...
They were to be...
They were, okay, great. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, she's actually been a great partner and has been guiding us on what to do and what not to do as far as airshows and stuff like that, what they learned from the first two years of doing them.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Georgia.
Mayor Carter.
Yes.
Got a question. Georgia, did you say B-52 fly-in?
They talked about that, oh, flyover.
Okay.
(laughter)
I wanted to say that, but...
(laughter)
So my improvements better start.
We're close enough.
Bring me S.E.H. back. Moving on, Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Ron.
Our next meeting will be at Mars, I don't have an agenda.
Okay. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission.
We didn't make, last month, we didn't have a forum. We had some questions. Kim, I think was too busy to come. We still need answers to those questions. I mean, Brian was going to talk to you about it.
I did a full...
He said, "Let me finish, and I'll pass it over to you." He just said that unless you had something for us for Wednesday, we're not going to meet. Is that all right?
Yeah, actually, I read that, and I'd written out a full summary of all the questions that I had got. Wednesday's going to be beginning to end of the day, interviews for the...
Well, if you don't have anything for us, then we didn't have anything to meet.
No, there was no new projects or anything like that. It was just all the summary questions that you guys had.
Okay. Then we probably will not need this meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Skylar.
The plunge is currently closed for maintenance, which is going really well. It will reopen February 9th. We have not scheduled our next meeting yet.
Okay. Parks and Recreation, Marty.
Parks and Recreation Committee met today at 2:00 P.M. here at the Mueller Center. The topic of the Tree City USA was brought up again. There were some members which had not had an opportunity to participate in the last meeting, and keep Hot Springs beautiful, so there were some questions and some feedback, both pros and cons. We discussed that for a bit, put it on the agenda for the next meeting to address some of those concerns and some of the inquiries into Tree City USA. Also, on the agenda today, we have been contacted by Allison Ritterbush, who's with the Wildcat Classic Mountain Bike Race. They have been approached by the Black Hills Mountain Bike Association, and they are doing a youth series bike race. They tested it last year in Sturgis, it went really well. This year, they already have onboard Sturgis Spearfish and Rapid City. They would like Hot Springs to be the fourth location for an event, which would be here on September 30th. So we're pretty excited about that. It's actually sponsored by Strider. We will need some volunteers. The committee voted unanimously to give it the green light and move ahead. There are some, there's a bit of work to be done just to determine mainly where the loop is going to be. They require to have a three-to-five mile loop. It's all ages, from kindergarten to high school. Definitely could bring a lot of people to the committee. The benefit for us, having it, having the fourth event in the series, is that some of the people who participate in previous events, because they can win points, would want to participate in Hot Springs as well. So we'll probably have the majority of the crowd from that race. So we're looking forward to finding more details about that. We are also looking at, after discussions with the farmer's market and considering some of the ongoing events at the park. I have been talking with City Commissioner Marby Area about the Chapter 16 and city ordinance regarding peddlers, solicitors, and transient persons. So we're going to begin looking at that, and that's also going to be on the next agenda, to see if we can maybe streamline that a little bit for single events, for vendors. There's quite a few hoops that you've got to jump through right now with that, and we'll see if we can address that to help people comply with that as well. There's going to be a meeting this Friday, February 9th at 8:00 P.M. at City Hall, and that is going to be to discuss the details of the Cal Ripken Beating Baseball, running separate from the summer rec program. And I believe that is based out of Shadrin. Is that correct? Yeah. So we're hoping that could be, address the needs of baseball for the kids and Kathy dealing with summer rec. You have one last thing on your list to add to that. We also are aware now that there is $16, $600 from the Elks, it's going to be more than sixty. We might, anybody who knows volunteers might be interested in working on constructing a backyard at the tennis courts, instead of in the basketball section, having it actually be part of the tennis court section. And they have $600 to apply to that, so that's something else we need to move forward and look if we can find somebody to help instruct that, or some volunteers to help with that as well. So the next meeting is March 5th, 3:00 P.M. at City Hall, and we'll look who's invited to attend.
Top one's going to come at two a.m. down here. Are you going to keep looking around?
You know, that, we hadn't really chatted about that. That was recommended because it's easy for Chris.
I like it so that he can come, because he misses them, and then I have to tell him that I put him on different committees, and he doesn't need to come.
Yeah, he did mention it. It made it a lot easier if he has something going on. So perhaps, yeah, we'll just, it worked out for me. I think everybody else had no problems. It's a hard ride for anybody, so. But well, the next meeting will be here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. Mining and zoning, Commissioner Arley.
The next plan and zoning meeting will be February 21st at 7:00 P.M. at City Hall.
Okay. Public Safety, Bob.
Public Safety met on January 17th at City Hall. Mayor Carter, Chief Close of the South Dakota President. We have a number of old business items that we're still following. The city's still waiting on notice from the South Dakota Department of Transportation to schedule a public meeting regarding intersection on the truck bypass. So public, keep watching the news to see when that's going to happen, and you're encouraged to come out and tell the state what you feel about that, what the concerns are for the intersection. The police reserve unit, getting that up and going isn't going as quickly as I hoped it would. Chief Close will work with the local papers to get articles regarding the expansion of the reserve units. Ask anyone interested to contact his office. Last week, there was only nine individuals that contacted the office. If there's anybody out there, get in touch with Chief Close so we can increase the number of our reserve force. Neighborhood watch groups, we had talked about that. No one's contacted the police department of any interest in starting a neighborhood watch group. So if there is anyone out there that wants to be there, you can contact the police department and let them know your interests. Any packets on the information side? Received a copy of the Chapter 23, the city ordinance, Chapter 23 Taxi Caps and Puzzles. You also received email, a copy of an email, and Mr. Sinek sent out the attorney in Garland's response. There's, the purpose of that is to propose changes to that particular ordinance. Some of that focusing on Uber and Lyft, those kinds of services. There's been discussion within the ordinance about whether the ordinance is even needed. So that was the reason we sent the, asked Misty to send out the question to the attorney and see what his feeling is. When you read his response, the general feeling is that the city should have this kind of ordinance in place. It is one of the larger ordinances, and there were a lot of changes suggested to it. So what I would ask you to do is let me know if you feel that the safety committee should go through with making recommended changes against, for your review and later, if your feeling is, you don't think this policy should be in place, there's no sense of us spending the time on all the potential matters and everything. So look over the proposed changes. If you would, look over the question Misty sent to the attorney and his response, and please let me know whether you want us to move forward with this or not. So this isn't a vote of approval. I personally think that it's something that the city ought to have, provides extra oversight protections as far as how we monitor who provides services for our citizens. If they would bring changes to you and the general consensus of the council is they're not in favor, there's no sense in them spending all the time to do this. Let me know what your thoughts are, whether you want us to move forward with this or not. Installation of new police equipment about a month ago. I had asked for a particular item to be tabled. That was installation of the new cameras, so we've received additional quotes. The concern was having a police officer install the equipment, having a city employee receive benefits from the grant. They've received additional quotes. Everything's fine with that. The grant isn't in jeopardy. If, when you looked at your bills, Officer Schaefer is the one who may have installed the equipment, so that would be happening. So that's moving forward. New business items. Chief Close gave his monthly updates. Officer Wincott has passed all certification requirements and is now, now has her South Dakota State certification. Officer Chaffin is doing well at the academy. Police Department has been working on a large local theft case and is waiting on a warrant to arrest the suspect. Police Department is seeing more interaction with displaced individuals due to the cold weather. The Ford Taurus police vehicle has been repaired and is back in service. That was out of service for a couple weeks, so that's going to be... The last item is what I had mentioned to you as far as tableing the item from the bills, the Leads Online. A discussion that I recall was having, and if I misunderstood what Chief Close had said, that's on me. I'll apologize to him ahead of time, but I'd asked for that to be tabled because my recollection of the conversation was that he would be looking at a service called Leads Online. Leads Online is a quote, "technology service helping law enforcement catch criminals while helping businesses reduce the hassle of reporting," end of quote. So, it's a service that could help with local stolen property, but it was very 10,000 level. We just had a lot of, you know, all the benefits, but I'd like to continue having that discussion. Police training. We had talked at the last council meeting, it was approved for Chief Close to develop train in Sioux Falls. There was some concern about whether he should use his private vehicle or use the city vehicle. Had that conversation with him. His preferences to leave his all-wheel drive vehicle in town in case there's inclement weather, it would be available to the officers. And the spare police vehicle, it's his feeling that it is a limited condition to be out on the road. So, the committee agreed with Chief Close using his private vehicle for transportation to train in Sioux Falls, and that made sense. I'd like to continue that conversation with Chief Close. If the city has a spare vehicle that they don't feel comfortable with using, why are we calling it a spare vehicle? I think we need to look into having a reliable spare vehicle, not just a spare vehicle that you don't want to use. So, we'll continue having that conversation. We also looked at the 2017 police data. The committee of 2017 statistics, during 2017, public got a total of 418 opportunities to interact with the police department. The top 10 categories of police activity had 1,722 traffic complaints, 658 animal complaints, 188 citizen motorist assists, 178 disturbances, 139 theft and shoplifting, 123 ambulance assists, 119 welfare checks, 96 suspicious vehicle persons, 81 juvenile complaints, and 74 drug citations. The next public safety meeting will be scheduled for the third Wednesday of each month, so that will be February 21st, 2:00 at City Hall, Public Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. I think maybe the police are building a case for the new vehicle that was denied during this last budget hearing. Okay, Public Works, Bob.
Public Works met on January 30th. Mayor Cotty, Tracy, Misty, Billy Morrow, and myself were there. We discussed the brush piles. Kim and Misty will begin work on a request proposal for removal of the brush piles. Still room at the landfill to accept more brush. A resolution for the piles is needed. We need to figure it out. Options that were discussed, chipping and converting the chips to biochar, city purchasing a tuck rinder, and bringing the piles. We've been talking for a number of months about sewer backup in private residence. Tracy's making good progress in designing the replacement for the undersized sewer line on Houston Avenue. Total sewer line replacement would be approximately 1,600 feet. Tracy's waiting for Eastman's to be completed. If approved by the council, work could begin as early as spring, and the work would take about one to two months to complete. So, once all of that comes together, obviously, recommendation will come from the council for your approval. The security fencing, that has also been a project that's been running for about three or four months now. The installation of security fencing around the 2 million gallon tank is complete. With this last fencing installation, the fencing project that was approved by you, the security culvert pumping station and the one at 2 million gallon tanks is complete. City's still waiting for the surveying to be completed before they begin rerouting the road to the 2 million gallon tank. The conversion of city locations to solar. The most recent solar replacement proposal that the government generated was reduced from a 20-year lease to a 10-year lease, because the current state South Dakota law doesn't allow a lease period greater than 10 years. South Dakota Municipal League is working with South Dakota representatives and senators during the current session to amend the qualified law, 921.18.1, to increase, allow Holy Spirit to 10 years to 20 years. The cantilever sidewalk, the design of cantilever sidewalk, Mayor Cotty's been working with Tracy and Misty. Kim had been working with School of Mines and Technology. They have two graduate students, two seniors, and one faculty advisor who's a professional engineer to discuss the design of the cantilever sidewalk along River Street. And the eighteen minus contract, that's still being reviewed by the attorney. The next meeting will be... Next scheduled meeting will be February 13th, 2:00 at City Hall.
Thank you, Bob. And one point I just wanted to clarify, the replacement of the sewer line is not necessarily tied with the sewer backup. It is to accommodate road. Sewer backup was caused by unauthorized material coming down the sewer line. I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of that, us. Moving on to Southern Hills Economic Development, George and Marty.
On the Shekko map, January 26th, the Red Rock River Resort, the annual banquet, and it was celebrating the growth and the entrepreneurship that has been going on here. There are at least 100 people there, and we're getting business owners that love to contribute. We've been helping customers. President Kelly Tate announced new board meetings, and we have guest speaker, Lou Schuster of Black Hills Energy, who presented encouragement in growth, and outlined our assets and challenges, which roll in within how we perceive our growth. We shouldn't become so engrossed in something so huge that we can't handle. It was a very good speech that he gave. A report was given by Brian Spitzer on the progress of the Hot Springs community engagement process, and community members participated over six months, accompanying the outline and proof of priorities for our community. There are at least 700 people that have been in that process. Word was presented to Fall River Health Services for being a platinum sponsor and the largest private employer. And Kim Marbury spoke on the progress of our city's new comprehensive plan, and that is the first time since 1981 to be updated. The next meeting is February 16th at the Winter Circle, and Andrea talked a little bit about the housing tax remain, and that's been a good discussion.
Thank you, Georgia.
You probably already noticed in your information packets too, that we received from Andrea brochures, they had the engagement process, and that's something that Shekko instituted back in September of 2015. I'm sure you looked that over. Helen, all right?
Great. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Skylar.
Our next meeting will be February 12th at 5:00.
Okay. Volunty Fire Department, Ron.
The next meeting will be, it's coming through tonight, 7:00 P.M.
Your comprehensive plan, Sam.
We met on January 17th. We discussed the transportation section of the comprehensive plan. One of the main things we discussed was Highway 385's large truck traffic, including its impact on the pedestrian friendly vision we have for hot springs downtown, the wear and tear of the roads, and the risk of a possible hazardous material situation. Because there's no alternative route, any truck carrying hazardous materials is allowed under state law to travel straight through our busy downtown, creating a risk of material leak in case of an accident. So, we discussed possible solutions that probably, including a truck bypass on Central Up Road. It's the recommendation of the Conference of Planning Team to get the state to help fund an improvement of this road in the name of public safety and also to prevent the wear and tear on our roads. We discussed replanning of untaxed land, which will be a process over the next several years and would lead to increased tax revenue for the city, as well as simplifying our land records. And we also discussed locations for additional parking along River Street to allow for increased parking. We believe that increasing available parking will be crucial to allow for the economic development of downtown businesses and to allow new businesses to open, as well as allow for it to be easier for tourists to get toward businesses. Our next meeting is yet to be determined. We'll probably work that out later.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. Well, work by committee members, thank you very much. Moving on to the resolution, Item A, Resolution 2018-5. We have a 2017 contingency transfer resolution. You have that in your package. It's a $2,500 contingency, moving $125... Moving $2,500 from contingency to cover snowing over expenses. I'd accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-5, 2017 contingency transfer resolution.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve that resolution. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also have in your package Resolution 2018-6, the Catholican Avenue Right of Way, use as access to bed. Need to get a property up there that's east of the library to be able to have access to their home. You can see the resolution in your package. I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
We'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-6, Catholican Avenue Right of Way, use as access.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business item A, we have a possible motion and discussion to renew the municipal operating agreements for alcoholic beverage license holders for 2018. I did check with Police Close, you do have a list of those licensees in your package. There have been no significant problems for many of those businesses. I believe, Misty, you also checked with the police department on that, and do you have anything to add?
They also remit that what the agreement is, is that they'll remit a percentage of their purchases back to the city, and so they are all paying up.
Okay. Accept a motion then to renew that operating agreement?
Make a motion to renew the municipal operating agreements for alcoholic beverage license holder for 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to remove those operating agreements. Is there any discussion?
Approved.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We also have a possible motion and discussion to approve the South Dakota High School Activity Association Facility Use Agreement for the 2020 Boys State A Golf Tournament to be held here, Southern Hills Golf Course, October 5th at 6:20 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement. South Dakota High School Activity Association Facility, the use of our golf course, Southern Hills Golf Course, on October 5th and 6th in 2020.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I'll make the comment, and that is, by having it here, they come and use our golf course and tell the turn that it's a city purpose, so it is bringing people here if you're a need.
Oh, absolutely. It's a great thing.
I got a shot of the restaurants and stand that everyone's doing.
So, again, opportunity to get more people to Hot Springs. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a possible motion and discussion to act on a request for proposal from the South Dakota Scholarship Foundation. Let me just give you a little bit of a background. You do have some information on that in your package. Our finance officer did get a email from the South Dakota Scholarship Foundation, which is this South Dakota Pageant, wanting submissions for communities to manage and operate the Miss South Dakota Pageant beginning in 2019. So, again, we want to give an official answer to that email, and we feel that it's important that you, as a city council, was your opinion approval or disapproval of making that submission. Again, I just remind you that if you look through that package, it involves everything to do with the South Dakota Pageant, from providing computerized ticket sales, getting hotel rooms, judges, pageant officials, entertainers. It involves hosting several events, providing meals, and so forth. And we did check with our attorney. I did get a call from Chris just before I left the office this afternoon, and he said that he recommend that this is not something that a city should get involved in, there's just so many ramifications that could be detrimental. He suggested the Chamber, I've talked with the Chamber at a past meeting. Again, it's something that's not on their radar either. As you know, Hot Springs has hosted the Miss South Dakota Pageant for 71 years. The city has provided this facility for use at a very reduced rate. We've supplemented things like sound system, lighting, bent over backwards in every way to support, house, and store their trailer with all their props and so forth here in our maintenance facility. Our police provide security for parade, and so we've supported very with a lot to make sure that that stays in Hot Springs. Many members of the Scholarship Foundation and their executive committee have worked very hard as volunteers to put that pageant on. It's going to be a shame to lose it, but by no means, I feel, the city can take on that responsibility with the current manpower and resources that we have. But, we want to make sure that that's the feeling of the council, and so I would accept a motion to act on the request for proposal. That motion may be either to accept that proposal or to deny that proposal.
Did you make a motion to not act on?
Yes, yes.
I'll make that motion, to not act on the request for proposal for the South Dakota Scholarship Foundation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we do not submit a request for proposal from the Miss South Dakota, from the South Dakota Scholarship Foundation. If there are any further discussion or comments, we may... If there are any further discussion or comments, or any other questions?
I just comment that Nick, Miss D, talked to us about this, and if she has anything else to add, I'm going to ask her to clarify what we're doing.
Yeah. The only things I did hear mention is advertising. We always pay for advertising in their magazine. We purchased a full page. We add our, as part of Hot Springs did, in their program. And also, we've donated scholarship dollars in the past. This budget allows, even up until last year. So, we want to continue to fully support the South Dakota Pageant and to encourage them to continue, like, to seek out ways to keep it in our county. It's the only pageant to have been in the same place since its inception, and that's something special. That being said, it's not a city finance office responsibility to competitively bid for a third-party activity like this, so although we're recommending not to move it forward, if there's anybody going to take the torch and run, like, that the city fully intends to continue to support the pageant in every way possible as we have for the past.
I'll move a number of meters.
And by, if we do vote to deny this request, we do have an article prepared for the paper in City School so that we can, you know, let the public know, and also we'll be writing a letter to the South Dakota Scholarship Foundation with our reasons why we can't do this. I suspect in discussions with members of the executive committee that they're looking for increased revenue for scholarships, and they feel by opening up the opportunity maybe to a larger city, they might be regarding more support. But I guarantee you, they will not find any community to have that pageant better than Hot Springs, South Dakota, because of the hard-to-above work, works, volunteers, and how many volunteers have put into this over the years. So, that said, it asks that all those in favor of denying that request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll get that official word out later. Looking for a possible motion and discussion to set a public hearing on the 20th of February at 7:00 p.m. to act on the application for a retail wine license to be used at 603 North River Street by Hanging J., doing business at Red Rock River Resort. Accept a motion at this time to set a public hearing.
I'd like to set a public hearing on February 20th, 2018, at 7:10 p.m. to act on the application for retail wine license to be used at 603 North River Street by Hanging J., LLC, DVA, Red Rock River Resort. I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to set that public hearing. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a possible motion and discussion to reappoint Nina Patel and Steve Simonic to the Business Improvement District Board for a three-year term, 2018 through 2021. Both of these individuals I know from past experience with the Chamber and also recently. They're both active business owners, and they're involved in the bid board activity. I would certainly highly recommend their reappointment, but I accept a motion to make that reappointment.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Nina Patel and Steve Simonic to the Business Improvement District Board for three-year terms, 2018 through 2021.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Nina Patel and Steve Simonic. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We will just take five other resets here. Moving on in the agenda, we have item A, possible motion and discussion to authorize Chris Cackey, the building manager here at the Mueller Center, to agree in writing on behalf of the city to the addition of a pop machine to be included in our existing vending machine services agreement with Hayden Enterprises LLC. Apparently, the machine that they've got down here is inoperable, and we do have a contract with the Hayden Enterprises for a vending machine. All we need to do is add this to that contract, so I accept a motion at this time to accomplish that.
I didn't read the question.
Should we make a motion?
I'll make a motion and then we discuss it. Because I have a question. I won't make a motion that it was done in writing on behalf of the city.
I'll make a motion to authorize Chris Cackey, building manager at the Mueller Center, to agree in writing on behalf of the city to the addition of a pop machine to be included in our vending machine services agreement with Hayden Enterprises LLC.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we authorize our building manager to agree in writing at this time, open for discussion. Go ahead. Georgia, I know you've got some.
I was trying to make a motion, but I was going to eliminate that part. My concern is, why do we have him doing it in writing on behalf of the city's personnel and for our private business?
And I'll go ahead and refer to, Miss D, and go ahead and...
The current vending machines that we have in use with this agreement are here at the Mueller Center, and this replacement is at the request of the building manager here. It's not at the request of me. But our current agreement with, it's not Hayden Enterprises yet, yes, with these enterprises, is that they won't place new equipment in any location that one's agreed to in writing by the city. So, you're agreeing as a council, and he's just signing, saying that you agreed that. I can sign it or anyone else can, but it really doesn't make any difference. You're not changing the contract. The contract was approved by the council, signed by the mayor, and countersigned by the finance officer. So, this would just be an addition of a piece of equipment, and it's being recommended by the building manager of the Mueller Center. That's why he's the one who took it.
And quite frankly, I feel that any department head that owns, that is responsible for a facility such as the Pro Shop, the Mueller Center, the airport, or Evans Punch, has the right to acquire contracts, and then they go through the process so that it does come before the council for appropriation. But they are still the department heads. They're responsible for everything that happens within their walls with the approval of the council. There's no underhanded dealings here. There's nothing that he's entering in a private contract. That's why it's coming before the council.
Do we have any other needs?
Yes. No other questions?
No contracts are being signed, huh?
By who?
Anyone.
No, the law says contracts have to be approved by council, signed and writing by the mayor, and countersigned by the finance officer. This is not a contract. It's adding a piece of equipment at this location.
And they request the complete... This is very typical in all of our, all of our department's heads that want to have a contract with somebody, we go through that process, just like we do with rack carts. We have suppliers that do those, and they go through, those are much minor, much more minor things. But yes, we have, we have all of our department heads with the ability to request those changes and request a contract of sorts with it, as long as it meets those requirements, if it is a contract. It has to go through those signing requirements, but they can request it. It's part of their functioning of their facilities.
Is there any other questions or comments concerning this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to approve the Sludge Press Equipment Installation Project Change Order Number Two for an increase of $5,274.71. You do have a list of items in your package as to how and why that changed as the contract went on, and I would accept a motion to approve that change order at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the Sludge Press Equipment. The Sludge Press Equipment Installation Project Change Order Number Two, increase to $5,274.71. I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have some. We've increased the cost because of the engineering, I understand.
Nope. It's due to the addition of a...
I mean, I was just saying that we did do that earlier. Our engineering costs were increased also.
Was that your number-one project change request? I'd have to look at it.
I'm just saying, with what our engineer did, it seems like we're kind of responsible for having all these extra things.
No, I disagree, but most of these were based on what they found once they started opening up things and putting the machinery in. As with any contract, whenever you get into things, especially under that environment with the H2S as high as it is, you start getting into things and you find out things that need to be corrected at this time, and that's what most of these things are. Plus, it takes into the account the reduction in bid that was required for the trailer, so that was actually a decrease.
I read all that. I'm just saying that because our engineer, the increase, we have a change going on with increase in his, does he take any responsibility for not having some of this done?
Absolutely not. The engineer is responsible for the engineering and design of the project. It cannot and should not be responsible for what they find once they get into the ground, once they get into the walls. This is a very typical change order.
It's not that it's not that much. I'm just saying sometimes we assume that everything is just going to be one day.
It doesn't work that way in construction. You will always find extra things that happen.
Yeah, I know you're with that.
This pay goes directly to the contractor. It's not a change to the engineer, the speed, or his plans or services.
Right, I know.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
Yes, I have a comment.
Yes.
I'd like to agree with Georgia that in general, engineer that oversaw this project, I think did a weak job informing the city of some of the things that were going to be necessary. A number of them were discussed in public works, and I hope this is the last thing we see, and it looks like the project is done. I'll be glad to have it on my end, but I do agree with Georgia that the engineer could have done a better job overseeing the project.
Looking at the additions, the only thing that I saw was the addition of the nuclear wire, and that was probably a big area of responsibility. Other than that, in my opinion, the increase was due to the conditions of the comment on site, but the estimate certainly that was initially provided was way off base of where comments are coming from. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to approve Triple Creek LLC for the Southern Hills Irrigation Improvement Project, a change order number one. That's an increase of $1,816.91. That's due to an increase in the cost of HDP pipe. As you recall, we've talked about the difficulty in getting that HDP pipe here, and the cost has gone up on that since the contract was originally did, largely because that pipe has been funneled off and used to help recover from the recent hurricanes in Texas and elsewhere, so...
I'll make a motion, George, to accept or approve Triple Creek LLC Irrigation Project Change Order for $1,816.91 to do the increased cost of the HDP pipe.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve that change order. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I'll just make one comment. That HDP pipe is better than just regular, so that's the last number.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a possible motion and discussion to surplus the Water Department 2003 Dodge Ram 2500 pickup with the VIN number as noted there on your agenda. This is part of a well-researched plan to update and move vehicles. This vehicle will be traded in for a new vehicle, and it's the one most logical to be traded in because of, it's had some work done on the rear end, so it's the most logical one that we want to surplus. I accept a motion to surplus that vehicle at this time.
I'll make a motion to surplus the Water Department's 2003 Dodge Ram 2500 pickup. Do I have to say the VIN number?
No.
Can you say VIN ending in the last word?
VIN ending in 0751.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to surplus this Dodge pickup. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a motion before us, discussion, accept a quote from Yamaha Golf and Utility in Burnsville, Minnesota, authorize mayor and finance officer to execute a lease agreement for '40 2018 Yamaha drive-to car gas golf carts to be used at Southern Hills Golf Course. This is a budgeted item. If you recall, we knocked the number down from 54 to 40, feeling that that's enough golf carts to have available for rental carts. And you have the paperwork for that lease agreement before you. Is there any... I accept a motion, I guess, to make that lease agreement.
I'll make a motion to accept a quote from Yamaha Golf and Utility, Burnsville, Minnesota, to authorize the mayor and finance officer to execute lease to own agreement for '40 2018 Yamaha drive-to car gas golf carts to be used at Southern Hills Golf Course.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to accept that lease agreement. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion?
I would note that it's under the amount budgeted, so we do have budget authority for the payments, and that our attorney has reviewed the lease agreement and provided just some notes, but it looks pretty standard.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up, Miss D. Any other comments, questions, or discussion?
That was my question, is how much did a lawyer look at our agreement?
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Possible motion and discussion to surplus the '50 2001 Yamaha golf carts from the Southern Hills Golf Pro Shop, and that's part of that lease agreement. So, I accept a motion to surplus those golf carts.
Make a motion to surplus '50 2001 Yamaha golf carts from the Southern Hills Golf Course.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we surplus these '50 golf carts. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a possible motion and discussion to approve a travel request from the airport manager, Ed Jensen, to attend the 2018 South Dakota Air Force Conference in Deadwood on April 10th through the 12th.
I'd like to make that motion to approve the travel request from airport manager Ed Jensen to attend the 2018 South Dakota Air Force Conference in Deadwood, April 10th through the 12th. I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to allow Ed to attend that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to allow Ed to attend that conference. Are there any questions, comments or discussion? Hopefully he'll win another reward for the airport, uh, the Oxford Airport. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, finance officer report.
I'd like to start by mentioning that, um, in this white public information book, not only is there the agenda, but there are copies of all of the information that is used to consider, uh, the items that are on the agenda. All that additional information is also available on our website in the public packets section. Um, I've never seen anybody flip through this book, so I just wanted to make sure that any members of the public that are interested in reviewing, like, the lease agreements or the contracts or the memos from our, um, department heads that help support the decisions this council is making, uh, then that information is available to both in hard copy and on our website. I also wanted the opportunity to go over the monthly finance officer report for February. Um, in the memo provided in the information side of the council packets, I have the following reports that are through the thirty-first of January. As always, I have the year-to-date profit and loss summary report, which shows by fund the year-to-date revenues and expenditures, and I often get asked in these first several months of the year if we're going to get out of the rent because we, uh, see slow, um, revenue, uh, coming in, and we have expenditures that we pay yearly at the beginning of the year, so some big expenditures coming out. So just remember that, uh, that's not a cash balance report. It's just showing you revenues and expenditures year-to-date. The fund summary report shows you, uh, how the departments of our city are doing compared to the plan for the budget that you pass. Uh, the cash balance report shows the current balances in our Wells Fargo, which is considered our main checking account, and our Bank of the West checking accounts. We do have cash assets also in, um, debt service reserve funds that you don't see in this report. Uh, we also have our cemetery perpetual care savings account that's restricted, um, specifically for the cemetery that you don't see. We just show those two large accounts, and I can give you cash balance accounts in any of our CDs, um, or those savings accounts at any time. Just please remember that cash in the bank does not always equal available or spendable cash. There is a difference. If you have any questions about what those are, happy to answer them. And then also, uh, provided in your finance reports is an investment report, and that shows by institution and investment type all of the cash assets of the city. So this has, um, on the investment report also those savings accounts and those, um, time deposits or CDs also included in the balances. I've been working on the two thousand seventeen annual report. We just passed a much smaller batch of payables, two thousand seventeen payables. I hope we're done, but we have one more meeting in February, we'll have a special few. If there are any vendors out there waiting to fill us, we'd like those, uh, so we can get a book for two thousand seventeen, and most of our revenues with the exception of only a few for two thousand seventeen, I think. I've been working on the utility receivable. I've got the payrolls approved, which do pass the resolution to help offset the, uh, increased snow removal expenses at the end of this year. That will help. The, if you wouldn't have approved that, we would have had that department be over by the authority, so twenty-five hundred isn't too bad. I appreciate you asking that. Uh, I've been working on the property tax analytical, which compares the Florida County Boarders' Tax Book to our revenue amounts received for the year. I'm still working on auditing and reconciling the debt, and to record the addition of the numeral development bonds from Golden Falls Road Improvement Project of a long-term debt and our special assessment of savings. I still need to capitalize our two thousand seventeen bond buying expenses and calculate those for two thousand seventeen depreciation. I do plan to have the annual report delivered to you by the first meeting in March. I've been receiving and reviewing the two thousand eighteen legislative updates sent out by Vaughn Taylor from the municipal league, who has been five hundred and thirty-four bills to introduce. And I'd like to thank Georgia Holmes for going and representing our city at the municipal legislature, legislature this week, and I know that she's been asking for some feedback, and she's going to be very happy to be there, talking to our legislators and watching obsession and action. Uh, we talked about the South Dakota Scholarship Foundation already and the RFP. And the last thing I want to discuss is the upcoming election. Our publications will start in the middle of this month with our notice of vacancies. We'll have a mayor seat and four council seats up. The nominating petitions can begin being circulated March first, and the deadline for filing them is the twenty-seventh. The total number of signatures required on nominating, uh, petitions is based on the number of registered voters in that ward at the last proceeding election, or was it the last proceeding watching recently changed to a fixed date, um, the second Tuesday in January of the year of the election. It did work with the county auditor. There were six hundred and thirty-nine registered voters in Ward One, so if you were interested in running for that position, you need thirty-two signatures. Ward Two, uh, six hundred and eleven registered voters, so thirty-one signatures may require. Ward Three is also thirty-one signatures, and Ward Four is twenty-six. Voters at large are more than, uh, no more than fifty voters needed, so the minimum required signatures on a mayor petition would be fifty. Uh, if you or someone you know is interested in participating in your city government, I encourage you, um, to throw your name in the map. If you have any questions about the way those petitions work or what you might be in for, I'm sure any current council member and anyone in city hall would be happy to answer those questions, and we encourage everyone to be comfortable.
Thank you, Misty. Yes, city administrator?
Busy times here. I just wanted to go over a couple of fun things. We tried something new, uh, before the closure for Evans Plunge, and we had a very well-intended, although I'm not sure how it was going to be. It was just a week ahead of time we put it out there. We had the puppy plunge, uh, very, very well-intended. Forty-one dogs and their escorts, plus, uh, some other people that came with these dogs and people had a great time. Everybody was well-paid. Fun time had by all. We had, uh, both of our local papers there. They did a great job with that, and we, uh, at the end did a small piece on it, and it was, um, shot live on, uh, livestream on our Facebook page. I wish I could show you all the, the graphics, but there's been more activity on our Facebook page of likes and people actually following us, and, um, all those positive things that you track on Facebook, we're spiking two to three times above what we get in the summer time, uh, just with the puppy plunge. So it's been, it's been really, really awesome. So I think this is going to be something that we'll have, uh, maybe more often. We'll have to figure out how often we should do this, but it will be, a day before we'll empty the pool and clean it just so that people don't feel like they're going to be doggered. But what we, what we found was, is that there's so much water that goes through Evans Plunge, it washed right out within an hour after the dogs were gone. So, uh, it was, uh, it was a really positive thing. Uh, for Evans Plunge also, there's, um, fifty percent off on all admissions on Valentine's Day, so, um, if you're looking for something to do on the fourteenth, uh, you don't have to have a date, you might find one there. Fifty percent off. Couple other things that we're doing. I wanted to let you know that, um, Shed Co. and the Chamber, so the Andrea and Olivia and I are meeting once a month on the second of the Tuesday of every month to go over and coordinate what we're working on, seeing what we're going to be doing that's, that we can help each other out, as because we feel like, um, if one of us fails, we both, all of us fail. So we're trying to lift each other up, really get connected that way. Our meeting is actually tomorrow. Um, one of the things I'm going to be talking to them about is it's a small thing, it's a simple thing, but one of the tools I use whenever I decide to go traveling someplace is Pinterest. It's a female thing, apparently. It's primarily female, very few males will go onto it. It's a very visual site. We now have a Hot Springs, um, City of Hot Springs Pinterest site, uh, and all the boards are various things from all of our sites, Evans Plunge, Southern Hills Golf Course, Angistora, um, Mammoth Site, all of our parks, Custer State Park, Wind Capes, um, National Park. But we also have things like stop by and stay a while, so it has, uh, anyone that I could find that had hotels that had information. I grabbed that information and put it in one, um, history of the town, so I had some history pages that I could put in there, um, stores and things like that. So I was gathering different websites I knew from people in town and putting them in there and picking out pictures for them. So it really becomes a one-stop shop, and if you go to that site, you can find out literally anything that you want to do, and I do have one called It's All About The Water, so have some great things on that. So, um, what I'd like to do and what I'm going to be talking to Andrea and Olivia about is putting it out there for the Chamber so that they can start liking my page and I can like theirs back, and the more synergy you can get like that, the more connectivity there is for people who are actually searching for Black Hills places. I did put one for Black Hills so that it'll at least get people to us, and then we can show us, so what other boards we have there for people to use. In your, I just passed out at the beginning of the meeting our five goals for this year for each department. That's just for your reading pleasure. Um, we're going to be working on these all year long. I'm setting up, uh, meetings on the fourteenth and fifteenth with all of the department heads to go over their department goals and find out what our next steps are, what particular, what potential obstacles we have, uh, different ways that we're going to be managing so that they can meet their goals. So that's going to be ongoing. Last thing, I'm sure, George will be talking about this as well, but Wednesday we have our final interview with our four applicants to fill my old position, uh, the development coordinator. We're hoping by that time, uh, we're going to be able to offer somebody, and by the end of the week, have somebody, um, that we just have to figure out a starting date for after they come before you to view food. So, um, that's, I'll end it with that.
Okay, thank you. A lot going on, and I know, I think we're keeping you busy, aren't we, Kim?
Yeah.
Good. Just a couple of things I want to touch on. Bob mentioned, uh, about the, uh, solar, uh, presentation that we had, and, uh, I really want to thank the municipal league for taking the initiative, uh, to follow our request and, uh, get that, uh, legislation changed to twenty years. It would allow us to actually save money if we did adopt and decide to go with that. We'd actually save money on our electrical bills because of the lower payment. Uh, also, uh, just to report, uh, we've been talking in public works about a backup generator for our, uh, hot water pumping station, and, uh, Black Hills Council Local Government is, uh, looking at the Sumer grant, uh, through FEMA funds to see if we qualify and possibly get, uh, a grant to fund that. Also, just to let you know, uh, I was elected as the vice chairman of Black Hills, uh, Council Local Business, so, uh, just, uh, everyone would, well, I think I was in the wrong place with the right line, or anything along that, something like that. Uh, we do have a couple of concerns that, uh, we can't directly fix, but, uh, we need to be aware of this, uh, people and try to, uh, help as much as we can. We're losing our kids' own childcare center. That's a concern to the VA. I've been contacted by them, uh, and, uh, although we can't, uh, begin a childcare center as a city, but, uh, I know Kim is working to get the stakeholders together, uh, for a meeting and see if they can find some, uh, solutions for that. Also, uh, there's been a lot of activity and interest in housing recently. Kim will be working to get an RFP for the two separate city lots we have available to develop for workforce housing that fits the plan that this council approved, and, uh, hopefully we can have some submissions before this, to, uh, start construction of, uh, workforce housing on those lots this, um... The plunge has been a large part of South Dakota tourism, Black Hills tourism for a long time. The state, uh, at their annual tourism conference presents statistics as to how well tourism did every year, and they do, uh, hire a very, very excellent firm to determine those statistics and economic impact, and I just want to share that with the council and the public. Within the state of South Dakota, tourism is a three-point-nine-billion-dollar industry. There's three-point-nine-billion-dollar, uh, spending that happens, or that happened this past year in tourism. It has a six-point-two-billion-dollar impact in two thousand seventeen, uh, for all of, uh, all of the state in supported sales that come from all of our visitors. It employs thirty-seven thousand five hundred jobs directly. Just for a reference, that's equal to the city of Watertown, yeah, just a month. They, uh, pay two hundred, uh, our visitors pay two-hundred-and-ninety-one million dollars in state and local taxes, and, uh, to make up for that two-hundred-and-ninety-one million in state and local taxes, if, uh, we did not have that income coming in, each household would have to contribute eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars in tax, additional tax, to maintain state level government. Now, uh, these are statewide numbers, but Hot Springs is a tourism town, and we are responsible for, uh, maintaining, uh, one of the oldest tourist attractions in the Black Hills. And so I just want to point that out, that, uh, there's benefits to tourism that are far greater to our community than just the advocacy to get the people to walk through the door in Evans Plunge. There's also, uh, a benefit from the money that they spend in our C50, and I think we need to be aware of that as we, uh, make our decisions, budget decisions, and the way we support, uh, the plunge. I think, uh, obviously, uh, the plunge is doing a good job, and we appreciate the staff and, uh, things like the puppy plunge that, uh, draw interest to that. So I just wanted to share those statistics because I think they're, it's important that we realize the big picture is more than just people walking through the door. It's the people that, uh, come here to do that and spend the money and support our, our, our community and state. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Been moved, seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.